To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Tuesday, February 18th, meeting of the Board of Aldermen. Our first order of business is additions and deletions to the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions? Attorney LaChance?
Yes, I'm requesting that the executive discussion and about the Rutland Regional Airport and Fire Department contract be removed from the schedule. It's not ready yet.
Okay.
So moved.
Alderman Gillum?
I'd like to add under new business, an issue for Public Works to be referred.
Okay. So, can we include that under your motion? Alderwoman Davis?
Uh, sorry.
Can we include Alderman Gillum?
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So we have changes to the agenda, removal and an addition under new business.
I'll second that.
Second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up is amendment and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Michael, sorry.
Can I get some? There's nothing coming through the mic.
That's a Peg TV question. I'm not able to help with that.
I'm just letting you know.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Is the mayor now? Can you hear me now?
That can be it.
Is that it?
It's better.
Yeah, good.
Okay. Next up is amendment and approval of the minutes of February 3rd.
I'll move to the approval.
Second. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes of February 3rd? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is public comment, where members of the public are invited to address the board on matters not on our agenda. I see that we have several candidates for office here. Just a reminder that this is broadcast on Peg TV. So while you can speak about your campaign, you can't make a call to action saying, "Vote for me." Anyone would like to address the board? Tom Donahue, step right up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom Donahue, 21 Laverne Drive. And I'm like a kid on Christmas Eve, because tomorrow night is the Peg TV and Rutland Herald Live Debate, uh, not debate, forum for the Aldermanic candidates. So that'll be at 6:00 PM, which I forgot to mention the last time. But it'll be live on channel Comcast or Xfinity, Channel 1085, but also being broadcast on pegtv.com as well as YouTube. So you can watch it on your favorite handheld device or on your TV. And then it'll be rebroadcast after that, too. So I encourage people to tune in and watch it. It should be great. And then help you make your decision on March 4th. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the board? Step right up and just state your name for the minutes.
Uh, Dave Kopp, Rutland City. I'm here representing several of us who were former Planning Commission members for Rutland City. And just wanted to talk about the sign ordinance and the way it is or is or is not being followed this election season. Just want to read the part of the sign ordinance, it's brief, that has to do with political signs. Signs providing information or promotion of an item that will appear on an election ballot are allowed, provided they are erected not more than three weeks before an election and removed the day after the election. Such signs shall not be more than six square feet, and that's like, like two and a half feet by two and a half feet roughly. That's maximum. Any person erecting a sign of this nature is also responsible for its removal. And I'm here to say mea culpa, because I was, I put up my sign like five weeks too early. I don't know, way too early. Anyway, so, I mean, we all do it. You know, this, the sign ordinance is not well understood, especially as it relates to political signs, elections. And so it often just, we people, we sort of fudge and, you know, maybe make signs a little too big, put them up too early. And we on the Planning Commission have taken, or former members have taken notice that this is happening a lot this particular time. And we're just trying to encourage people to be a little more respectful of the sign ordinance. We spent, in fact, several years in our go-around, just trying to revise the existing sign ordinance and make a better one. And through all that work, I thought we came up with a pretty good product. But what ends up happening, and this happens all over the country, there's this thing called sign escalation. And you have a business or you have a cause and you, you want to draw attention to it, so you make your sign bigger than the next guy. And then pretty soon, then the next person is making their sign bigger. And what you end up having is not more attention to your cause, but just clutter. And that happens with businesses and political causes. So putting a limit on size, the size of political business and other signs, is, it's something that we just have to do. And we have one building inspector, Mark, who is outstanding at his job. But he's also tasked with enforcing the sign ordinance, and he really doesn't have time to do all of that. And I just think it's, as a matter of courtesy and civic duty, that we should comply with the sign ordinance when it's, when we have a local political season like this. And it's, it's, you know, we have these, these ordinances for a reason. We work hard on, on them, and they make a lot of sense. So I just, you know, trying to urge people to comply. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the board on matters not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to communications from the mayor.
Thank you. Good evening. Okay. First order of business, on December 2nd, we approved entering into negotiations with VTTSG for our new IT services. I do, the contractor sent to you this week for the managed services piece. The savings to the city on this over our current IT vendor is going to be something like $40,000 plus. So our current IT vendor charges, or I guess our historical IT vendor, charges per trip and per hour. And then for the amount of money that this contract is, we are at a, we are at a fixed cost for all the services. It's as if we have IT staff here for the $35,000 managed services contract, which is phenomenal. There are some components, like monitoring software and whatnot, that are per, per computer. But for the most part, this is going to save us a good amount of money. He's come in, he's done his evaluation so far. And what I like about, what I like about this particular contract is the response time has been quite good so far. So with that, I'd ask the board to suspend the rules and approve the final contract, as reviewed by our city attorney.
Alderwoman Tadio?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move to approve the VTTSG contract.
Second.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the VTTSG service contract. It's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Awesome. I want to talk about this past winter storm that we saw this week and some challenges that we're dealing with. Right now, there is a salt shortage in the Northeast. Not to mention the fact that it is too cold to lay down a lot of salt anyway. Those two issues have made cleanup very difficult. I want to say a big thanks to DPW. The crew started at 6:00 AM, and a lot of them went to 6:00 AM the next day, some of them to 3:00 in the afternoon the next day. They were out there again today, getting everything ready for Winter Fest, which is awesome. And they're going to be, after Winter Fest tonight, clearing off the street and then cleaning up as much snow as possible in preparation for the next storm. So the, the challenges that we have is, with the fact that there's ice and snowdrifts and a salt shortage, cleaning up has been very, very difficult. And I want to thank everybody for their patience as we've been trying to do that. A lot of people reach out about specific areas, specific sidewalks not getting done. I've been able to communicate directly with Bob and Dan and DPW about the areas of urgency. For example, in front of the VFW, there were handicap spots that people couldn't get in and out of. We were able to address that quickly. There were some sidewalks. So I just wanted to say thank you to DPW for the extra efforts on the storm. It's a little unusual. We haven't seen a storm of this nature in many, many years. So it's great that, that people have kind of jumped to, jumped to work and gotten it done. Couple of events, I was able to go up to St. Albans and meet with Dominic Cloud on two different issues. We discussed one of them the other night in a committee meeting about kind of their situation on when Walmart came to town for them and how they reacted to it. And the other one was about the TIFF district. For those of you who don't know, St. Albans is kind of the model TIFF district in the Vermont way. They follow, they follow the guidelines that are set by Vermont, and they are able to leverage their TIFF district. And it has been very, very successful over the last eight-plus years as they've worked on it. And that success has been based on the fact that they really focus on those partnerships between the, the investors and developers and where the market fails. So market failure, where the city can step in and take over and help out with that infrastructure change. I've actually asked Dominic if at some point down in the future here, after we get our TIFF district awarded in the, in February, maybe before our face filing, that he'd come and visit and kind of talk about the successes that they've had in St. Albans. Winter Fest is happening right now. If you're here, you're not sledding, and I apologize for that. It's one of the most fun events. It's a great time. Winter Fest will continue for a few more days. Feel free to check out their website, look at the calendar. With that, the next meeting, the next Board of Alderman meeting, which will be on the 3rd, is not typically broadcast by Peg TV. It's recorded, but not broadcast. And what I wanted to say, you know, I've, I've had the pleasure of serving as mayor for the past two years. I've enjoyed every minute of it, even the difficult, difficult minutes that exist. Because in all of those minutes, I've known that what we're doing is the work to better the city, to, to improve Rutland for everybody that lives here, everybody that wants to be here, people that come to our community and participate. You know, we've heard a lot about the challenges over the last few years, everything from public safety, affordability, the homeless situation in Rutland, and, but we've heard a lot about the successes and the momentum that we had, and the developments that are coming in. And tonight, we're going to be talking about the LOI for the hotel. I mean, these are great things that have happened over the past few years that have brought us to today. But the biggest piece for me is gratitude. Gratitude to the people that work here, that put in the effort every day. Gratitude to the citizens that even when we disagree are willing to give their feedback and bring that information forward. And gratitude for the patience as we work through differences of opinion or trying to solve problems, or even as the examples are with these storms, you know, trying to get to the solutions as quickly as possible for the people that, that deserve those. So for me tonight, thank you very much. I would encourage everyone to show, to go do their civic duty on Tuesday, March 4th, and vote. It is extremely important that you do that. If you are not able to vote on Tuesday, March 4th, you can still get your ballot through the mail or come to City Hall and, and fill it out here prior to Tuesday, March 4th. That's it for me tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is consideration of special event permit requests. We have an application for Heritage O Family Shiver Me Shamrocks for March 15. Alderwoman Tadio?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'm going to move to approve this, but is somebody here to speak about it before I do that?
I can.
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let you speak, and then I'll continue.
Thank you very much for allowing us to have Shiver Me Shamrocks again. This is actually the 11th year. We weren't able to have it for two years, but we got almost there, the two years COVID and the year after. So we're very excited. We already have 100-plus runners signed up. And we're thrilled to be able to have some nonprofit folks that'll be having vendor booths as well. So the Boys and Girls Club right now, and Rutland County Pride, Mentor Connector, and the Rutland Rec possibly, and, there's one more I'm not remembering right now. Oh, VNA is going to be with us. So we're collecting folks along the way to be able to make it fun. And we're going to have beverages at Taco Fresco, Poppin' Moos, Speakeasy, and Luna as well.
Nice.
So we're excited about that. But if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Alderwoman Tadio?
I will make a motion to approve the special event permit for Heritage O Family Shiver Me Shamrocks on March 15th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM.
Second. All right. Alderwoman McClure?
I just had a question. What is your cleanup plan for this year? I noticed last year that there were multiple signs for the run left on lamp posts around the city in downtown. And I was just wondering if you have a team of volunteers that's been identified to go and clean that up, because they were left up for multiple weeks last year. And they were in my neighborhood, so I saw them every day.
Ah, yes, we do. So we'll have somebody, we actually have a crew that's going around to put them up in the morning and take them down in the afternoon. So I apologize if that happened. But yes, they will be gone by at least 4:00, if not sooner. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So the motion on the floor is to approve the special event permit request for Shiver Me Shamrocks on March 15th. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next up is reports and letters from department heads and officials. First up is Treasurer Markowski with the City and Rutland Redevelopment Authority financial reports for the period ending January 31st. These were emailed to you.
I emailed the reports over the weekend, or yesterday maybe, and then the summary just a little bit ago. I'm sorry, it was just a really busy Monday, but it's Tuesday, so it was really busy. So it was a collection day, so it was very busy in the office. The third quarter tax installment was due today, so it was busy. Actually, I wanted to mention, over the weekend, we had over 120 payments by credit card online. I think that's the largest that we've had there, which is wonderful, except for last week, I got a, a letter from our processor, and our e-check fee is going from $1.50 to $3.50, which really is frustrating, because we have a lot of use of that. So we'll start looking, as time permits, for maybe a different vendor and see what we could do about that. That's a pretty good-sized jump. And we also have a, a lot of traffic with the, the box outside on collections, too. So my report is on the January 31 financials, and I've outlined cash balances. I did, did look comparing to last year. I know our cash balances are lower. We don't have as much in the balance that was the ARPA fund, right? Because we spent a lot of that. We also had a lot more bond fund cash last year that hadn't been spent. So I kind of, when I go through this, I compare, what did it look like last year? But January 31, we're collecting water. We haven't really picked up on the tax collection, so it's typically a little bit lighter cash-wise. So, about so. In looking at the delinquent report, when I compare prior-year taxes due, $964,000, it's a little bit higher than last year at $878,000. So we're still, like, I feel like every year we make progress, and then we add to the current-year taxes, and then that progress is gone, because now we're adding to it every time. It really is a struggle. Water sewer balance over 90 days at $242,000 this year compared to $310,000 last year. Linda in my office monitors a huge number of payment agreements. So we have so many people on, because we were doing the shut-offs, people don't want to be shut off, but we got a lot of people on a payment arrangement. So that, I think, is working really well. So, except for it's a lot of work. It's a lot of manual work, but, and, and property taxes also. We're in touch with people, even if they're not at the tax sale level. Because we don't want to own your property, we want to help you try to get caught up in any way that we can. So I wanted to mention that. As you are looking at pooled cash, which is all of the cash in the general fund, that includes the water funds, sewer funds, parking and transit. I think the parking fund with, we'll go with the smallest one, with the changes to the budget, I think this year, we're going to see that maybe getting, turning around. Maybe there won't be a cash deficit. We made a lot of changes there, so we'll see how we end the year. And then transit funds still running in a deficit. Right now, their expenses are high with snow plowing. Sometimes it kind of turns around by the end of the fiscal year, so mention that. Water and sewer funds still carrying a deficit cash flow. So I, I really analyze this and probably overanalyze it, but I worry about it. And it's really just a snapshot in time. So at the month-end, we're looking at what is the cash balance in these funds? So we're still collecting, that changes. Sometimes I, I look at that transaction activity for the whole year. Does it ever get to a zero balance? Does it ever cover all the costs? And we get really close on water funds, sewer fund, we just are really struggling there. And I think maybe with the rate increases that were approved, they won't be implemented until later, probably the bill due November of next year. But hopefully, we'll see some turnaround there in those funds. So I want to mention that. When I look at the balance sheet, the unassigned fund balance is about $2.9 million, so it's a little bit higher than the target. But it's, it's high because we, we want to have about $2 million to cover current expenses, right? $2 million or more, it gets us about six weeks, right? So 2.9 is high because we are, have also spent fund balance on those ARPA-type of projects that, that comes out of fund balance. So we remove the restriction, we add it to the fund balance. So at the end of the year, it all settles up, so it, you might see it higher than normal. Okay? Because we make commitments at the end of the year to use, excuse me, fund balance on current expenses, so. So I had that. Year-to-date, looking, really looking at expenses, we're seven months in, so our target, if we were spending normal, every, the same thing every 12 months, our target is about 58% where we would want to be. General fund expenses are at about 67% of budget. That includes encumbrances, so it includes those balances that we say we're going to spend, although we haven't spent yet. The non-tax revenue, that's the, the fees, rec fees, all those things, pilot and everything, is about 75% of budget, so that's good. We use that money to offset the tax rate as much as we can, so that's a good number. A few of departments are over that target of 58%, but not, I didn't see anything really concerning when I look at each department. Maybe they just had an expense early in the year, so. Water and sewer funds, water fund revenue is 50%, so you figure we have two billings out there, so that seems appropriate. Expenses a little high at 57%. And the sewer fund is revenue about 52%. Expenses are higher at 62%. So, but that might level out as we, we go through the year. Transit center fund, in the transit center, expenses exceed revenue by $27,000 right now, so. And the parking fund revenue is 57% with expenses at 16%. Also want to mention, the RRA has a cash balance of $163,000. And the RRA also has assignments of funds for the Rail Gateway Project, Business Development, Capital Fund, and Administrative Reserve. So wanted to note that. And any questions on the financials? I just have a few more highlights. Parking revenue, I wanted to point out, and I didn't at the last meeting, but really strong with that Park Mobile app. We're seeing receipts are about $4,000 a month, so that has really helped that fund, the Park Mobile app. Tax sales, I wanted to mention, we have one tomorrow here at City Hall, one property. We only have one property tomorrow, but I'm thinking that we'll have some bidders here. Also working with the tax sale attorney and have three others that are kind of on the docket, but working with them. Tax sale rules changed a lot last year, so there's a requirement for that payment agreement. We've always offered payment agreements, but it really is formalize that process. So many properties that we thought would go to tax sale, we're working on payment agreements When you're looking at the balance sheet, I wanted to point out, there's an assigned balance for what was that ARPA award, $1.3 million. That's, that, those are the funds that we haven't spent yet. Pretty much most of the award has been assigned for projects, but that $1.3 is what we haven't, haven't spent. So grant activity in the general fund is really significant. We have $1.3 million in receipts and $1.4 million in expenses. So that, on top of everything else that we're running through our general ledger, is all of that grant activity. And I did want to note the local option tax. The second quarter revenue was $455,000. When I took the two quarters that we received, were a little bit more than last year, maybe $30,000. That was good. I know we have a finance committee meeting on...
24th.
On the, Monday, the 24th. So that, and I'll get information out for, to support that $1.3 million in that ARPA award, kind of outline what, what the projects we, that were approved, and if they're complete, and the projects that are still in process, and have a discussion about some of those in process. So that's all I have for January.
Any questions for the treasurer?
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Next up, we have reports of standing committees. We have Alderwoman Tadio with a report from the Community and Economic Development Committee meeting of February 13th.
The topics for this meeting were tax stabilization, the discussion about food trucks, and the Rutland Downtown Plaza and Walmart. Committee members present were Chair Tadio, Alderwoman Davis, and Alderman McCann. Others present were Mayor Dungus, President Talbot, Alderman Barbara Gallo, Alderman Gillum, Barbara Spalding from the RRA, Treasurer Markowski, Superintendent Kim Peters, Jason Evans from Hangry Hog, Tom Donahue, and Gail Donahue, Lyle Jupson from Cedar, Attorney LaChance, and Claire Purcell from the public. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. The first topic of the meeting was to discuss food trucks in our community. This item was referred because food trucks are currently charged $500 to get peddler's license, are not charged the rooms and meals fee, and have been being directed to the Recreation Department to determine where they can park. In advanced conversation with Bob Protovansky, head of the Department of Public Works, Bob expressed that the main interactions he's had with food trucks is to help them with power and finding a location to plug in during events. He expressed that they should not park in existing parking spots or in front of restaurants, but that the Department of Public Works doesn't care where they park otherwise. Kim Peters, head of the Rutland Recreation Department, reported that in the past, the rec department has worked to bring food carts to events, and that depending on where they park, if they park in a city park, then food trucks are charged a fee, which is slightly higher for non-city residents. There are some parks with power outlets that can be turned on, such as Depot Park. She stated it would be helpful to have a document that stated where food trucks are approved to be, which would come with their license. Currently, the Hangry Hog is one of the only food trucks in Rutland who has paid a peddler's fee and who has been in touch with Kim Peters regularly. Jason Evans from the Hangry Hog spoke about the research he has done, and the other cities charge significantly less for food trucks to do business in their communities. He stated that Brandon only charges $100, and Middlebury charges $50. Jason said the next fee will be due in March and would like the city to take a look at options to reduce this fee. Treasurer Markowski stated that food trucks should pay the rooms and meals tax that restaurants pay. Alderwoman Davis made a motion to direct the mayor to establish a food truck criteria, including a discussion with the Recreation Department, Police Department, the Department of Public Works, the City Treasurer, the Planning and Zoning Director, to determine appropriate locations for food trucks, to remove the peddler's fee. appropriate locations for food trucks, to remove the peddler's fee, establish a new food truck permit fee, and clarify that food trucks will not, will be subject to the rooms and meals tax. This motion passed, 3 to 0, and I so move.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion on the motion. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The second topic of the meeting was to discuss the residential property tax stabilization for Claire Purcell for condos 7 through 12 at 24 Whale Street. The Rutland Redevelopment Authority Board recommended approval of the residential property tax stabilization for Claire Purcell's properties. Her goal is to get these apartments online by June 2025. Alderwoman Davis suggested doing 20% increases in taxes each year. The base value will be determined during the assessment and reevaluation that will be completed in April 2025 by the Rutland City Assessor. There will be an increase in taxes from years 1 through 5. A motion was made to recommend to the full board to approve Claire Purcell's application for a residential property tax stabilization for condos 7 through 12 at 24 Whale Street, including a recommendation for the state tax stabilization. However, we will table this until the next meeting because it has been determined that there may be a possible impact on TIF, and so some outside conversations need to happen, so we will move to table this motion.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's table.
Okay. And so the last topic of conversation was about Walmart and the Plaza. There's been lots of discussion about how to handle Walmart leaving the Plaza and what role the city will play. The city created a Plaza Task Force, which consists of Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Gillam, the mayor, and many others. Alderwoman Davis spoke about what the city needs. She stated that the city needs more housing and a movie theater, and she spoke about how the city can take control of the site. The task force has been discussing what kind of pedestrian traffic the city desires, what view the city wants from Center Street, and the public desire for retail. The committee entered executive session to discuss the Act 250 permit and the impact on the downtown. No decisions were made at this time, and the Walmart discussion will remain in committee. This meeting adjourned at 6:35 PM.
Thank you, Alderwoman Taddio. We have no other standing committee reports. Select committees, we have none. Reports of representatives, we have none. Petitions, letters, miscellaneous communications, I believe we have none. We have nothing on the agenda for the Board of Control Commissioners or Cannabis Commissioners. That brings us to unfinished business. All right, the hotel letter of intent?
I have no business.
That's under unfinished.
That's next. What's happening?
So Stephanie was on her way, she said she'd be here around 7:30, so she probably just run me a few minutes, like, because she's coming from the bar.
Okay.
Do the executive, one of the executive sessions first, and that's up to you.
Okay. Miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business?
Have a new business, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to refer the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan to the Public Safety Committee. This is the one that's being worked on by the Regional Planning Commission. The board will need to take action. There'll be a final proposal to the board on March 17th, and then the committee can meet, and we will refer it with an approval back out. So if we could refer it at this time.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan to Public Safety. It's been seconded, any discussion on the referral? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I have a new piece of business here. Is brought to my attention by the Department of Public Works, Ted Gillam, that we need to work on a lead service line inventory and update the committee and what the next phases are going to be on Phase 2. So I'd like to refer the update regarding the lead service line inventory to Public Works Committee.
Second. All right, so we have a motion to refer the lead service line inventory update to Public Works. It's been seconded, any discussion? Alderman Gillam again.
This is a requirement from the EPA, that's why we're moving forward on this, and that's why it's coming in at the last minute, because we're dealing with some loan issues and what the costs are for Phase 2, so we need to deal with the committee and then your back of the board.
Very good. All those in favor of the referral?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to the executive sessions.
All right. I guess, first of all, because I think fire department's going to take slightly longer. So at this point in time, I would look for a motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding the negotiation of labor relations agreement specifically with the Police Department and their union would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because the discussion will divulge the board's position on the agreement provisions to be negotiated.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, then I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the mayor, police chief, treasurer, clerk, director of human resources, and city attorney, unless there's, ah, and the chair of police commission, thank you, to enter into executive session to discuss the labor relations agreement as allowed under Title I, Section 313A, 1B.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, so we're back under unfinished business to discuss the Downtown Hotel and Living Project Letter of Intent, and I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie White, or Stephanie from Whitenburg, sorry.
Sorry, it's an occupational hazard. Hello, everybody. Nice to see you. Hello. I'm Stephanie Clark from Whitenburg. I'm a real estate consultant to the city, and you've seen me here before under the discussion of tax increment financing, and I'm going to talk a little about that tonight, but I'm also here to kind of take a bigger step back, because what we've talked about so far has been how TIF is a tool to be used for economic development in partnership with other funding sources and other ways to make your downtown more economically viable. So today, we're here to talk about the public-private partnership between the city and the hotel, which is known as the Downtown Hotel and Living Project. So my slides are in front of you. I'm going to go through them and, I don't know, kind of analog it and say, change your page. But essentially, what I'm here to talk about tonight is to represent the whole team. I'm here really as a kind of master of ceremonies more than anything, but to relay how this partnership has come together and explain some of the hotel-city-public-private partnership kind of inner workings that have to do with the LOI. And then the ask tonight is a vote on the LOI. And explain what the LOI is and where the next steps are with that process, so that you understand kind of the full stretch. Some of this is going to be repetitive for you as Alderman, and I know that, but we are hoping that this is also a piece of education for the public, because eventually, this will go to a public vote. We also have the presentation to the Vermont Economic Progress Council coming up and the decision on the TIF district, and so we want to make sure that everyone's kind of coming along and catching up when they need to. So I'm going to go to site history, next page in your packet. And most of this, you already know, but again, as a bit of education for anyone watching, listening, who doesn't know, the history of the site, in fact, many other people here should talk about this more than me, but I'm just going to hit the highlights, that there was a fire, there was, there have been many tries to make this site into something viable that's contributing to the downtown, and nothing has worked so far. This is the farthest it's gotten, and we are excited by the potential, but again, this is a public-private partnership because there has to be that public support. There are systemic issues here, infrastructure issues with water lines breaking on Whale Street and flooding local, you know, the abutting properties. There's the problematic combined sewer stormwater issues, the fact that the overhead utilities are too close to the project site to actually do construction on the site. All of these are inherent challenges to downtown development. This is not unique to Rutland. This is not unique to this site. It is absolutely ubiquitous, which is why the instruments that we're going to use to finance it exist. That's why tax increment financing exists. It's taking ownership of the fact that the municipality kind of has a role here, because we need to be responsible for our own infrastructure. So going on to a public-private partnership primer, I would just like to point out that, you know, PPPs, as they're known, are very common, very much becoming more and more common, especially in states like ours, where we have decaying infrastructure, downtowns without a tax base to support that, and the need for the municipality to step up and play a role, like I was saying before. And what I've learned, as I've come into this project much later than a lot of others who have played roles, is how cooperative and collaborative the Beldons have been in making this project happen. And in talking with the city and making it a collaborative partnership effort, and that's what's so essential. I speak a lot on TIF around the state, in other states, on economic development, and I always use the analogy of rowing, like a coxswain, you know, has to be at the front, has to keep us going in the same direction. And what you've got here is a property owner and a municipality working together, rowing in the same direction, where you're going to go farther faster, and that's, that's why municipalities are playing this role more and more. So in a public-private partnership, you need some key elements. You need to have documentation, you have to have agreements, and that's because good fences make good neighbors, good boundaries will help this go forward in a positive way. So everyone knows the expectations, there's no hiding, and that includes the public. The public is a partner here, like the public voters are partners in this. And so there can't be any hiding, and there's been a lot of transparency on both sides in order to get to this point. And so you need to have the paperwork and all the spelling out, which includes the letter of intent you have tonight, and that goes then into the development agreement. And we'll get into that in a moment. But I want to first highlight a few, what we really talk about when we say public-private partnership, is that there are benefits for both and from both. So from the private side, the benefits of the Hotel and Living Project. I'm not going to read all of them. They're on your slides, they'll be on the website, I'm sure, or on the, in the packet available to the public. But it's filling in the pit. This is, this is what's been wanted, been so desired for so long. Remediating soils, this is adding jobs, this is adding living space, this is adding places for people to stay. It's the obvious ones. But it's also things like your tax revenue increase because of rooms and meals taxes. There's a lot of benefit to having this particular entity in this position. So the city is, and I'm going on to the next slide about the city's investment, so the city has played a role and stepped up, and really the main thing is how to get this project over the finish line. Again, I speak about public-private partnerships often, and in the state of Vermont, I am hard-pressed to find a black hat, capital D, developer. And that is not, that is true here, too. There is not a big, bad developer trying to do this project, and I'm saying this not for the benefit of people in this room, who already know that, but maybe voters who have not been involved. But the fact that these are folks who are coming to the table, who are trying to, they have to make a profit on this, that is not a four-letter word. It is, has to pencil out. But, you know, how do they do that when there's $5 million of contamination remediation needed? That's a huge hole to start in, truthfully. So the city has stepped up, there is no part, without the partnership, there is no project. So the city has stepped up with tax stabilization, which we've talked about extensively, it's in the LOI, with TIF contribution to the infrastructure, and within the LOI are also the waivers and reductions you've seen that total around $750,000 over the life of the project. So again, this is how the city is stepping up and looking for creative ways to add value, and to add value not just for this property owner, but for the community as well. And I say this because the state really cares, and all the funders will care, that the city is doing its part and chipping in, you know, match in a way of not just hoping that others will come, but really putting skin in the game. So on to the infrastructure funding. I know that's been a big question. This is going to continue to change. So in terms of the capital stack, if you look up the street, I know Killington's a totally different animal, but it is, it is similar in the fact that it's a public-private partnership. You will see that they went to VEPSE and received authorization for up to $47 million of debt. Again, scale, you know, be disregarded, they got permission from voters for up to $47 million of debt. And then they went out and continued to pound the pavement to find more sources. And if you look on their website as of, it was actually a year ago, but, and that's been up, it should be updated, is a capital stack showing how much additional funding they got that brought down debt, 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 debt. So it's continually changing. And because we don't know the landscape of construction value and construction costs, the actual costs are going to continue to be refined until we put it out to bid. So what we're currently estimating is approximately $8 million of infrastructure, which could change, again, scope-wise, and the scope may need to be tweaked based on whatever funding sources we have. But it's going to be a stack. It's going to have TIF, it's going to have probably, hopefully, Northern Borders Catalyst Grant, it's going to have sales tax reallocation. There are other funding sources the city is going to continue to look at and look for to complete that, because this is a city asset. These are city assets. The restructuring of the water line, the, and the new water line, the restructuring of the sewer on Center Street, burying utility lines, that benefits everybody in the community. It is a public asset. So we will be back before you again. You will hear from us again and again, and the voters will, too. We need approval of the LOI to take it to the next step, which is the development agreement. The development agreement will then get baked into a phase filing, which goes to VEPSE. At that point, VEPSE has to decide if they approve of the use of TIF for the, we're estimating between 2.8 and 3.5 million of TIF increment investment that we still have to work through. And when we sent, and you'll see that again. So you'll see that again at the phase filing when you have to approve it, and that will then go to VEPSE. And then you put it on the ballot to go to the voters. So this is not your last decision on this project, and it is not the last opportunity for public input. What I want to say is that this is a great example of a high return on investment project for the city. For the contributions that I've already indicated with the tax stabilization and the TIF infrastructure, the infrastructure in general and the TIF component of that, there are going to be additional taxes created here, because this would not exist without the city infrastructure, or cities investment. There's going to be additional taxes that go to the general fund over the 20 years, there's additional taxes that go to the ed fund. There's going to be special benefits district taxes that wouldn't be there otherwise. There's going to be sales and rooms and meals tax, I'm sorry, that goes as well, obviously, that comes out of the hotel. And then after the 20 years, if you remember, I did a TIF graphic at every time I've seen you, and I didn't embed it in this PowerPoint, but you'll, you remember, it has before TIF, during TIF, and during TIF, the money's getting diverted to come back and pay debt service, but after TIF, you've got that, that new value, and all the taxes come back to the ed fund and the general fund. And we've estimated that it's over $400,000 that go in each direction to the general fund and ed fund after year 20, after the payment of debt. And during that whole time, they're paying their taxes on the existing value, too. So the existing value, that continues to flow as it does today. One last comment on the LOI structure, it is non-binding, so those, these terms actually could still change before the development agreement. At this moment in time, we don't expect them to, but I just put that out in case something comes up. What it's doing is essentially laying out the expectations of the results, like what contingencies this party has and this party has, the city and the private entity, and when we will make certain decisions. It lays out a little bit of a roadmap and talk about the two commitments from both sides. So we're here tonight to ask for the approval for the LOI. The next step will be the development agreement, the next step after that will be back. I'm not clear yet if we'll be back for two separate votes or one vote on development agreement and phase filing. Phase filing is paperwork, essentially, it's an application that kind of goes up to the state, stuff that you're all familiar with, but the state's not. So whether or not that's inclusive of the development agreement, and you vote all at the same time, or we break it out, is something we'll decide at some point. But you'll see us again, that's another opportunity. If you have constituents that are concerned, please send them that way, or send them to Mike or Ed sooner than that, so that they can ask questions. And then we're going to continue to look for funding sources, just continually, I mean, and new sources are coming up all the time. That's the thing. I mean, that's what economic development's all about, and new tranches of money. And then continuing the engineering for those public assets, and we're going to continue doing voter education and prep, so that by the time we go to the voters, probably in the fall, that's the hope, that everyone will have the information.
Alderman McCann, have a question?
Thank you. I really appreciate this presentation again, and I appreciate the patience on the back-and-forth from Team Beldon. We've had a fair amount of time to chew on this, to digest this, to look for red flags, to look for improvements, but I personally feel like I'm, I don't want to feel like I'm getting in the way of this anymore, and so I'd like to move that we suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And to start debate, at least, I'd make a motion that we approve the letter of intent.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the letter of intent as presented.
I'm sorry, I have one more, one more quick question, or quick point, which is that we have a handout. So we want to make sure all the Aldermen had a copy of this two-page, front-and-back-sided handout that you can use as talking points if you get questions as well. And we will put that on the website as well, both the RRA website and probably the city website. Sorry, I forgot that.
Thank you.
So we'll pause and allow the mayor to pass this handout out, and then we can move forward with debate on the motion.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's very unbecoming of an Alderman to call. All right, so the motion on the floor is to approve the LOI as presented. Discussion or debate? Alderman McCann?
I think one of the great numbers that's in this presentation is the, the overall kind of income foregone, if I understand, in terms of like tax stabilization and some of the other things that we're waiving of $750,000 lifetime relative to just the $5 million remediation of the soil. I mean, that, that seems like a pretty good investment on the city, and that doesn't even count the fact that there would end up being a hotel there if the rest of the project would be successful. So that's pretty positive for me.
Alderwoman Davis?
Just a point of order, Mr. Chairman. I think the motion should be to approve and authorize the mayor to sign.
Very good.
Perfect. And then my motion to be more accurate. Thank you.
Does the secondor agree? Yes, the secondor agrees. So the motion is to authorize the mayor to sign the LOI as presented. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you, Stephanie.
And we have one additional executive session. Attorney LaChance, if you'll read the language for...
I do. All right, so, thank you, everyone. At this point, I am looking for a motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding the negotiation of labor relations agreement specifically between the Fire Department and their union would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because the discussion will divulge the board's position on the agreement provisions to be negotiated.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, and then I would look for a motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the mayor, Fire Department Chief, Treasurer, Clerk, Director of Human Resources, and the city attorney, and am I missing anyone?
I don't believe so.
I don't believe so.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?